Good evening. We finally, we can get started. It is exactly 7:30. I'd like to welcome everyone here for our board meeting this evening. And I would like to acknowledge our new secretary that is sitting here with us this evening, Ms. Lobeley. We welcome you. You, my understanding is you're coming from Muhlenberg College. And you came with glowing references. So thank you for joining us and welcome. She will be our recording secretary and Dr. Smith will continue on as our secretary. If everyone could please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Going into visitor comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments are to provide input to the board on items that are before us to vote. Speakers must be district residents and sign in. Because this is a business meeting, there will not be a response period from the board. We ask that comments be directed to the board, refrain from offensive language, and you may not yield your time to a speaker that has already utilized their three minutes. Our first speaker this evening signed in is Jim Smith.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. I am Jim Smith and I represent Community Baptist Church of Quakertown. In December 2017, this school board sold the Lower Milford Elementary School to Community Baptist Church of Quakertown. And the church immediately began using the church or the property as a place for religious worship. We can all agree that religious worship is an exempted use, or a use that allows the property to be exempt from taxes. But due to a series of procedural missteps, missteps that begin with the assessment office not issuing proper notice, the notice never reaching the church to change from status, the status from tax exempt to taxable, the church being frugal with its money that it was entrusted to, being the stewards of that money. It decided not to retain legal counsel. They filed the wrong paperwork in the wrong office. The county opposed it. It was then that the church obtained legal counsel, not this attorney, but they hired another firm. That was another misstep. But through all of this, has put the church in odds or at odds with the school district. So as we stand here today, there was a letter that you were, your counsel was given on January 8th, 2021. It was reissued to your counsel. The Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania has requested that we mediated this. And so the church is here today for the purpose of extending an olive branch that is contained in that letter. Right now, the school district is pursuing taxes for tax year 2018 based on its assessed value of over $5 million for a property it purchased in December 2017. Sorry, it's sold to the church in 2017 for $1.1 million. Regardless of where you're at on the question of the church should be exempted or shouldn't be exempted, or whether the missteps are bad on the part of the church and they should be punished for it. We can agree that there is nothing but a significant financial windfall, an unfair and inequitable windfall to the school district if it pursues taxes for 2018 against the church on a base, based on an assessed value of $5.167,900 when it sold the property to the church for $1.1. And so we have extended an offer that whereby the church how claiming that it is taxes exempt. It offers to pay the school district taxes on the $1.1 million it paid for the property in exchange for the school district considering reducing the $5.1 million base tax to $1.1. And that's the reason that I'm here tonight. I would ask you to consider the equities involved regardless of how we're here. And the church respectfully requests that the board consider its offering given the diligence, the diligent attention it deserves. Again, this isn't olive branch. The church is doing what it believes is out of the reasonable. I have copies of the January 8th letter for any member of the board who wishes it, or any member of the public who wishes to view the summary of the position we have. I thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Smith.
As you heard, my name is David Smith. My wife Heidi and I are taxpaying residents of Southern Lee High School District. First, allow me to thank you to you current school board members for your dedicated service to the community. May I also congratulate the newly elected members who will be seated in December by a church of some of our good students. As pastor of Community Baptist Church of Cooperburg, which occupies the former Lower Milford Elementary School, I represent the church body of which suffer present the seat. I'd like to have those who are from church or represent the church to stand and see you if you want to do that. I thank you for coming to this. After 13 years of ministry and moving through six buildings, we believe you, the Southern Lee High School Board members, were used of God as an answer to prayer for this church. We view it as Almighty God's gracious provision. When in October, November of 2017, the school board voted unanimously to sell the Lower Milford Elementary School, a tax exempt property, a community Baptist, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, tax exempt church. At the time, both parties knew that the property sale was from a tax exempt school to another tax exempt nonprofit organization. In fact, this was one of the criteria for the success of the sale. Before the church purchased Lower Milford Elementary, we had a vision to see the Lower Milford Elementary School building stay intact as a lasting memorial of the Lower Milford Downton and become a lighthouse of gospel outreach to the region with an open door to the public. Over the past four years, we've had the privilege of hosting hundreds of local residents for community events centered on helping people come to know the Lord Jesus Christ and follow his will. We happily run the spend in carrying on its ministry, but rely solely and completely on the charitable gifts of the taxpaying citizens of this region. Since taking occupancy of the building in 2018, nearly $400,000 worth of necessary renovations, upgrades, and improvements have invaded the facility, all provided for by the faithful giving of church attendees. Needless to say, the taxation of the church by the school district for the 2018 year is a grieving situation and an unnecessary burden on the church's ministry. In January of this year, a letter seeking terms of resolution of our disagreement was sent from our legal counsel to your legal counsel. As of the present date, we have not yet to hear a response from the members of the school board on that. As a friend of the school board, as a taxpaying citizen of this district and as pastor of the Community Baptist Church, I urge this school board to take a righteous, courageous, positive step toward reconciling our differences and relieve the unusually high tax burden on this gospel ministry serving alongside this great school district. Thank you so much for your time, folks.
Good evening. I'm Michael Mayan, I'm superintendent here. And I just wanted to convey that it is my understanding that we are in mediation on this issue. That I think, as was suggested by Mr. Smith, that the offer has been received. I can tell you that it is currently under review. I believe that the county is also involved in this. No, it's strictly the school district. And so all of that is being reviewed right now. I don't have the details as far as the actual analysis. But I do, I do know that it is the board's hope that we come to a settlement that makes good sense for all involved. And that certainly is the intention as we move forward.
We can't have a back and forth. I'm very sorry. Okay, thank you.
You are welcome to give me a call in the center, in the office here. If you have any thoughts you want us to share, I would certainly be very glad to hear them or come in for a visit if you would like. And it's on the website if you want to send me an email. Be very, very happy to have that conversation.
Our next speaker is Ms. Amy Bauscher.
Good evening. I'd like to share a letter with the community that the high school staff recently sent to Dr. Mayan and the school board. The staff at Southern Lee High School want to express our deepest gratitude for our principal, Beth Ariel. We hope that this letter conveys our admiration for the infinite efforts Beth has taken for our students, staff, and community. Our district has endured many administrative changes over the last several months. So many of us believe that Beth's energy, professionalism, and tireless commitment to Southern Lee High must be recognized. Since the day Beth arrived, the high school staff have marvelled at Beth's limitless energy. We often ask ourselves, does she sleep? She's a personal resource for many students in their darkest times, conversing with them in her office, talking quietly with them in the hall, and encouraging them when she visits their classrooms. She attends their concerts, their matches, their inductions, their plays, their games, their exhibits, and their science prayers. She started a beat'em club whose phrase is "I will knock your back" so that students never feel alone while at school. She created an advisory department at the high school with a commitment to making sure that all students feel safe and cared for. Thanks to Beth, the halls of Southern Lee High are decorated with brightly colored signs reminding students to take care of each other, to gather strength from personal adversity, and to remember the power they hold to make the world better. Her tireless efforts to show our students, to shower our students with compassion is a shining example for all of us. However, Beth's passion for education transcends her desire to help kids feel loved and supported. She demonstrates the same commitment to their academic achievements as well. Unwilling to accept mediocrity, she is fully entrenched with the staff in updating curriculum, creating dynamic lessons, and innovating assessments, all to provide intellectual experiences that make students truly value the teaching and learning process. She gives us the gift of both high expectations and steadfast support. There has never been a time when a staff member was told no when suggesting an idea for a class or a club. And Beth has been instrumental in finding materials to help to organize, communicate, and execute our vision. But Beth is also gifted at recognizing our soul of humanity and not seeing us as just employees. Her support extends to our personal lives too. She worries about our sick parents, the emotional well-being of our children, and our personal, physical, and mental health concerns. Beth truly sees the staff and students as part of Southern Lee High family. And we all deeply appreciate her professional dedication and commitment to each class. Additionally, Beth's commitment to Southern Lee High is also evident in the selfless way she commits endless hours to organizing special events for the community. Although not an exhaustive list, just a few examples. She has spearheaded the parent academy to help parents prepare for the college process. She holds parent-student and teacher advisory meetings to solicit feedback for how we can improve. She hosts graduation celebrations, parades, special events. Beth turns day breakfast for community members, fundraisers, and food drives for the Southern Lee High community. She's also worked tirelessly to support the emotional and academic needs of students by advocating for an additional guidance counselor, a full-time social worker, a math tutor, a writing lab teacher, and additional instructional aides. Although we talk daily about how much we adore Beth, we did not want to miss the opportunity to also share our admiration for her with the Southern Lee High administration, school board, and community. We truly do not know where we would be without Beth. And we hope that this letter gives you at least a glimpse into the effort she puts forth every day for this district. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Tordarsky. The new rules, it was not passed at the last meeting.
First of all, I'm really happy that the new board members that are starting to serve at the Southland here with us tonight. I look forward to hopefully a new beginning with those new board members where the new voice feels like it's been heard, acknowledged. I know that there's been a lot of things pointed at the folks in the community that have come to speak and you've been critical of the way people have spoken to the board and code of conduct from your community. I'd like to question the code of conduct from a board member. If I went home on my computer and I said, hey, you know, halfway up Beverly Hills Road, there's a great Halloween display, that's great, okay? And it could happen to be a board member or a member of the community who had that thought. But when you go online and you begin doxing people who are running for office and those that support them, that is cyber law. It's dangerous. It's dangerous to the people who you've called out and given an address out to. It's dangerous for their property. It's dangerous for their children who have no children. There is no place for a school board member to be doxing people running for this school board or the people who support them. I'm not going to call out who it is, but I expect that this person, hopefully tonight, would apologize to those and anybody else that supported them. I would hope that if there's not a code of conduct already in place for this board, that you have the discussion starting tonight about what you need to do to have a code of conduct. That's inappropriate. You have no business as a board member giving out addresses online of people because you don't politically agree with them. That's inappropriate. Thank you.
That concludes our visitor comment. Oh, I will let you know that if you do want, you're welcome to stay. But if you do not want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to go at this point. But you are welcome to also to stay.
And for anybody who elects that they do want to stay, just a reminder that we are still under a state order where face masks must be worn covering both nose and mouth. So please comply with the order for now.
These folks are here expecting because we were told that there will be a vote tonight. And if there's not going to be a vote, and you're giving me your word that there will not be a vote, I think that's the motive of us here.
There is not, that is not on the agenda for this evening. That's okay. We like to hear from the community. That's fine.
No, and I'm sorry for that misinformation. And to the extent that you would like to come in and talk about whatever it is you would like. The office is right over here. Just send me an email or give me a call and we can arrange that. Sure, sure.
Okay, we can keep, proceed. Moving on to 3A, the executive session summary. Mr. Khan, if you wouldn't mind announcing our executive section, please.
Certainly. Prior to this evening's meeting, there was an executive session to discuss several personnel matters and one matter of ongoing litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. 3B, approval. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 25th school board meeting, please?
So moved, but perhaps a correction?
Yeah, I need a second first. Okay, any questions or concerns?
Well, there was a little break in our meeting last, last time. We went outside. I don't know if that should be noted in the minutes.
Probably.
It should. And in fact, it should probably also reflect that the public came out with us since we conducted our second public comment period outside. I just want the record to be clear that the public did actually come out with us and had an opportunity.
So can we have tabled that until the next? Or just post, just not vote?
No, I think it's, I think it's fine for the board to approve the minutes as.
And then just add it in. Okay, okay. So can, a motion to approve the minutes with the correction that will be added that the meeting was, I guess, conducted outside for a little bit. I was not here. So can I, any other questions or concerns with the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to the approval, motion to approve the minutes of October 25th workshop meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any questions or concerns about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? Ms. Lobeley, I just want to say, I saw you looking for first and second. So it's usually, it is usually Kathy who will do the, Ms. Parsons who will do the first, and Dr. Smith does the second. So we'll try to stick to that for you for today. So. No superintendent report for today. Okay. Moving on to curriculum. 5A, motion to approve the high school program of studies for 2223. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Scariel, I didn't know if you have anything that you wanted to add or it's in there. It's in, okay. Does anyone have questions regarding the program of studies? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? 5B, a motion to approve the attached Gwinnett Mercy University Letter of Eligibility practicum agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any questions or concerns about that? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, moving on, nothing under six or seven, under eight, business and finance. 8A, the approval of the bills list. Motion to approve the bills list dated November 8th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And any questions about the bills list? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. 8B, we discussed this today during workshop. A motion to approve the resolution with regard to Act 1. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any questions about this? We did discuss this in workshop. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Does anyone object if I take 10A through L together? May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
And any questions about the 10A through L? Wow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, other business, anything under that? Communications, the board update for LCTI. Ms. Parsons?
I do have a board report. I'm going to pass these around while I'm talking. At the end of October, there were 2,041 students enrolled in 46 different programs from nine sending districts at LCTI. According to the monthly program of studies, we can see that Southern Lee High has 136 students attending LCTI. And the four most popular programs for our students are Emerging Health Professionals, Diversified Career Occupations, Criminal Justice, and Health and Medical Sciences. The Emerging Health Professionals program is a senior-only program that has a job shadow component at St. Luke's or LVHN and dual enrollment with Penn State or LTRIC. The new program that will be introduced for next year will be an animal science program that can lead to a vet tech certification. There is a big interest in this from area veterinarians. As is true with all LCTI programs, there will be an internship or co-op with it. On October 19th, I attended an event at LCTI where they opened a time capsule that had been put in a cornerstone 25 years prior when the current building was built. A couple of dozen people attended and spoke. The current Joint Operating Committee Chair, Gary Fedorcho, was hired in 1996 as one of his first teachers. And he is, so now he's the chair, but he was a teacher then 25 years ago. So that was kind of cool. And our own Bill Miracle was a member of the Joint Operating Committee at that time. Bill is our current LTRIC representative and is a former school board director. So he was there and he actually found his, his old LCTI pin and he got a new one. In the time capsule were pictures of the construction and early staff and administration, the programs offered, and a video. Attendees were asked to sign posters to memorialize our attendance and they were put in another time capsule. As always, it was a well-done event. In the last week in October, students in eighth and ninth grade visited LCTI, including Southern Lee High students. Each student received a program tour guide that I've passed around here that has a short description of each program, a picture of a student in the program, and a QR code that when scanned gives a short YouTube video of that program. Tomorrow, November 9th through November 11th, starts the fall virtual open house, which is an excellent opportunity for parents and students to easily see everything the LCTI has to offer. Each day offers a different in-depth view of several highlighted programs. Pre-registration is required. And there, I sent everybody an email with a link and we can put that in a minute so anyone else could see that as well. Or you can just go to LCTI and see it there. And the next Joint Operating Committee meeting will be a virtual committee of the whole. That meeting will be on November 22nd at 5:30. And this is where they go through all the finances of LCTI, which are pretty in-depth. And that will be presented. There will be no voting at that meeting and there is no committee meetings. And I'll pass this around too. This is LCTI enrollment for Southern Lee High students as of the end of October. And it shows you where every student is, all the different programs. It's pretty interesting. And I put at the bottom what the codes are, like the academic center or the morning or the career academy program, whatever. So you can kind of see what our kids like. That's my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
I don't have a question, but just a comment looking through the brochure. I'm just always amazed and just at the range of offerings at LCTI. It's such a treasure of our community and so many amazing opportunities that are available to our students. So thank you for the update and I'm anxious to see the, because, you know, I mean, I just made some notes in there, you know, web design, more than just the typical, what you consider, you know, most people think of as the LCTI options. We've got web design, teacher education, supply chain management, ad design, commercial art. It's really impressive, so.
It is really incredible. Last year, when they had to go virtual, just like our teachers did here at Southern Lee High, they had to turn on a dime and figure out how to turn hands-on programs into virtual programs. And it was a stretch. And I'm sure Dr. Smith can tell us, because her student was there, how hard that was for the students, for the staff. But there were some good things that came out of it. They found that by changing some of their time slots around that the students, instead of taking like an hour off, three afternoons a week to go work, to do their job shadow or work study, they could actually take a half day and go in. Or they could take a whole day and go in. So they're actually going to change how they do some of their work studies now so the students can have a better job experience.
That's great. I like the QR codes. I thought that was, that's pretty, that was very good in the brochure.
This was designed by a student. This was a student project at Little Bresser. And I'd be happy to pass it out if anyone in the audience would like to see it as well. But one of them is yours, Kyle.
Does anyone, anything else on that for LCTI? Okay, board update for CLIU, please. Ms. Game?
Yes, sorry, I'm going to pass the student count from Ms. Parsons first. All right, my update for the IU is that the IU is gradually working its way back to be a fully live board meeting, so it's nice to be in the same room with folks and not just zooming as a board meeting goes. And at this meeting of October eighteenth, Dr. Mark Scott and Daniel Fisher, Daniel Fisher runs the youth forestry camp. They give a presentation describing the youth forestry camp that is run out of Hickory Run State Park. At each IU meeting, there's a presentation about a program, and this is particularly interesting because I don't think it's something we hear a lot about. It's a forty-eight student program. It's a juvenile correctional facility run out of Hickory Run State Park, and there are four educational tracks that students can pursue through this facility. There's a traditional academic track, there's the academic credit recovery, so students who come with most of their high school credits to this program, that's the academic credit recovery. There is a GED prep and testing track for students who come without the majority of their credits, and there's a GED testing onsite. So kids who are referred or court ordered to this juvenile correctional program at the youth forestry camp can leave with their GED and walk away also with potentially trades and certifications that help them, you know, when they leave the facility to have an actual life direction and a path for perhaps improving the path they were on before they came to this facility. There's also a career and technical education element, much like some of the hands-on tech certifications offered to LCTI. There's a welding program among other trades. And some of the funding for CLIU is done through annual donations and annual fundraising, such as through the golf tournament. And so the trades that are performed, and while students are earning credit and learning these trades, they're also producing a lot of the products used in, for donation, donating to the fundraising efforts to continue to fund IU programs. So at the golf tournament, they were talking about, they made flags and they made awards and they made different golf, you know, cups and flags for the tournament. So the youth forestry program gives kids an opportunity to leave with trades and skills for employment, including an OSHA certificate, a flagger certificate, a forklift certificate. Typically, the stay of a student in this program is four to six months, but some students stay up to two years, and they often leave with a diploma or GED, or the other pathway is to go back to their home school to further their education. In this most recent year of students, prior to COVID, the most recent data for graduation data was twelve of twenty-one kids earned their GED through this program, and then when they were either released to seek employment or go back to their home schools for further education. So this is a program for kids all over our state, and some who attend are out of state because they happen to be court ordered for incidents that occurred in-state. It is a nationally recognized program that happens to be housed in our state and run through our CLIU, and it was just really neat to hear about how kids can be helped to find, you know, great pathways they would not necessarily otherwise have the opportunity to see on their current path. Other items discussed at the October eighteenth meeting, the comprehensive plan, the CLIU is undertaking its comprehensive planning process, and it identified two key priorities after that process. The first key priority is to focus on a curricular area of instruction, which is math. And the second key priority is to work with the leadership team for continuous improvement of the curricular culture, the organizational climate. That includes DEI, it includes internal career development, and it includes establishing team norms and adherence to the IU mission. So those are the two key priorities that came out of the comprehensive planning process. And then the other item of note is that both Dr. Eileen Ibe and Kim Talapan, their contracts were renewed until the year twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven respectively. So they will be continuing to lead the IU through those years. And that concludes my report for the IU. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Any questions? Okay, moving on to new business. Is there anything under new business? Oh, visitor comments. Could somebody grab, check the sheet or whatever? There are no, no one signed in for visitor comments. This has to be a record for us, being done this quickly. There is no need for executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.